Call this meeting to order.
Yay.
A run the planning board, today is March 12th, 2020. We are in the MLV Elementary School. Start with a roll call.
Yay.
Jamie Lowery.
Susan Raw.
Rich Ginnam.
Yes, Bertie.
The town planner is not here, he is only sick. So we're really glad that he's not here. We have approval of the agenda. Public comment. The approval of minutes from February 27th. We have two pending applications. One for Gary's auto salvage condition use permit renewal. One for BDF Holdings, a minor subdivision application. Under new applications, we have tariff and landscape of plenary site plan application determination of completeness. Item two is a run of self-storage, a major condition use application for determination of completeness. Item number three is Elizabeth's Way, an amendment to an approved major subdivision. Item number four is Weers Buick GMC service expansion of plenary site plan pre-application. And then we have some items under the land use ordinance that we need to get updated and then scheduled for public hearings. And then there'll be whatever other business shows up. So I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Yay.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. On the comment, the time during the meeting when if the public wants to say, wants to comment or give us something that they would like us to look at that is not on the agenda. Now is the time to do so. Seeing no indications, I will move on to the next item, approval of minutes from February 27th, 2020.
Through the chair, you got a question?
Yeah, Marty.
There are other people out here. Can we make sure the sign-in sheet is?
It is submitted.
I don't, I'm just asking so that everybody does their scribble scribble. Not to interrupt you, sir.
That's quite okay.
Back to your.
I move to approve the minutes as written.
Motion's been made to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Yay.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. The first item. Gary's auto salvage. We did a site walk on Saturday. Did you guys have anything that you saw?
Just that it was the most organized salvage yard I had ever seen in my entire life. Not that I've seen that many, but it was incredible.
Yeah, I would concur with that, I was stunned.
Sorry.
You need to go out there and see this place.
Let's put it this way, all the i's and t's were dotted.
That's correct.
Well, I.
I think the, no, go ahead.
I think there is one thing, and maybe it's not appropriate time to come to it, but on the application that I wanted to address. And that is, the drawing that was submitted. It appears that the salvage yard is depicted by a 200 by 200 foot area, which is
Not quite.
I know that's an old drawing, Gary, okay, really old, but it seems to me that we've got a, we should have something that shows what the actual dimensions of the use are, so that when you're going forward in the future, you know, when all the shit we're getting into. I was surprised at how much, I mean, how big the place was, number one, but also how well it was managed clearly, so.
I think the only, the only thing that I actually saw was that truck, which is on your property, but it's not on the property for the, honestly, it's one truck. And it appears to be frozen in the ground out there. Other than.
Wait, 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 last week and this week, who knows?
Well, last week and this week, it's not probably under.
Well, I'm just saying.
Everything was clearly marked out, we could see where everything was. It didn't appear to have been any changes since the last time we were up there. So we really had a good site walk.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, just eyeballing that, I would, I would think that you've got about three acres under use, actual use, if not more, right?
Yeah, would, the next, next, in three years, when you come back for renewal, if you could give us a new plan that shows the size of it? Because at 200 feet, it's obviously way bigger than 200 feet.
Yeah, that was what I was saying, way back.
Yeah.
That map would need.
Right.
And just to remain consistent with the way we've talked with other people, yeah, a new map would be a good idea, showing us the boundaries. Okay? Other than that? I had nothing on the sidewalk. Anybody else?
No.
Let's see if I can find. Tad did not give me findings of fact.
Well, we need to, we need to do something before that, right?
In his notes.
And then what we're going next?
Okay. That is, thank you.
So we just determine complete now and then?
If it is complete, we can schedule a public hearing for the next meeting and we will be good to go. And at that point, you should be able to, if, if none of your neighbors show up with pitchforks and daggers and things, we should be able to proceed right along and get you going on your permit.
So we're scheduling a public hearing?
Well, as soon as somebody makes a motion.
I'm just.
Yay. Public hearing, next availability date.
Motion has been made and seconded for the next public hearing, which was, is March 26th.
Thursday.
Yep, yep.
There's a reason why I say next, sir.
Can you give me a due second? I'll second it.
Good enough, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you in two weeks.
And that gives us number access.
Yes.
As long as somebody's not sick. The tag can be done by the computer.
Next item is BDF Holdings, a minor subdivision application. Proposal to subdivide a 31.5 acre parcel tax map 4023 with 715 Alfred Road in the AR District into four lots. Subdivide the existing 5,000 square foot building on a proposed lot two into an additional four units. And make improvements to the existing heavy hammer lane to bring it into conformance with the town commercial driveway standards. BDF Holdings, the owner and applicant. Paul's not here?
And Paul's also sick.
No.
Yes, yes, so I'm pitching on my, on my own tonight, kind of like it was a few nights ago, but I, Tad had given me Tuesday night at nine o'clock, a list of some things that you guys also got. So if you'll please abort, I have a few of the missing items, but I don't know if you guys even want to do.
Yeah.
You can drop them off and we can just talk about it real quick as we go. And they are, what it is, is a parking plan for the building, it's literature about the logging that has been done and some easements that Paul had not approved. So, yeah.
He did not include these on the plan?
Yes, he, or just in the submission, he said he submitted to them today, so I just included them with my.
I said, nobody has it because Tad.
Yeah, so, yeah, he felt, there was a couple of things. He felt we had to wait till the final and didn't realize, which is, you know, one of the first reasons, as Tad mentioned, you know, I just wanted to be in front of you guys in January, but because Paul was reading an old list of criteria, I found out again the night before the meeting, and that's why we were three meetings out, then there was a missing quorum, so that's where, why we're not here in January. But, yeah, so I'm just, and I feel, you know, bad that I don't have big pictures, I couldn't meet Paul, he called me this morning, he told me he could have made it, so we're just kind of doing the best we can to see what you guys think about this. I think some of the biggest things he mentioned was the hydrological study, storm water plan, but if you want, we can just go through his notes.
He and I had talked about them.
Yeah.
I think that's going to be more dependent on whatever goes out on the backside of that property.
Yeah, so, and that's kind of what we were talking about, is the fact that, you know, we have this opened up into big lots, larger acre lots, and basically, we want to be able to come back at site plan for, as they come. It is what we were hoping, and, yeah, we know there's a lot of ledge, but there's also 13 test pits that tested awesome. And then there's a good amount of ledge there that he mentioned.
Well, I think it, the reason that I think we should, should wait and do stormwater and hydrogeol, we don't know what's going in there.
Yeah.
We, we know what the plan is for the 28 acres, but we don't know what's going in there.
Exactly, and.
So it's going to be really hard to evaluate the impact.
Right, and that's then, we can take, make assumptions of what the septics are going to be, or what the buildings might be, but then, it's just a lot of wasted money and time doing that kind of stuff. And in the immediate, we just plan on extending that road 85 feet to make the fire trucks turn around a lot easier. That's another thing Tad mentioned to me Tuesday night in this list, was that he wanted written explanation from the chief that he was okay with the truck turnaround. I've seen him twice now, I asked him yesterday to give me written, and I just haven't gotten it yet, so we're emailing back and forth, but he's seen the pa, he's seen it, we've talked about it.
Tell them that you have to have that.
Yes.
By the next meeting.
By the next, exactly, I think, I had to track him down this morning, so. All this last minute stuff is not my style, I'm usually much more prepared for these things.
So I guess the one question that I would have regarding hydrogeologic study is to make sure that there is at least an adequate passing test pits on each of the four lots. I don't have the plan in front of me, I don't know.
There is.
If that's been determined or not?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, no, there is, and actually, most of the test pits are on the front half of the property where the lines are made, so, yeah.
Because otherwise, that's just going to cause your heartache.
Oh, yeah.
When you get into the actual site plans.
That's been, you know, my focus from the start with this, is I'm just trying to, you know, without a lot of overhead, I'm just trying to go in real easy and make sure everything we do is done right the first time. You know, we talked about this corner might need to be widened by four feet, and I gave Paul my opinion of that because that wasn't supposed to be the case, but, yeah, so. Yeah, but that's going to be an easy thing, when we add that 85 feet, we're going to make that corner just a little softer for everybody. But right now, an 18 wheeler, we've been driving 45 foot buses around it, no problem. 18 wheelers would just be dragging tiny back tires.
Of course, depends on the driver too.
Yeah, that's very true, and it's very true, and his speed of excitement. Yeah. Fire's actually going on, you know?
Well, no, I'm just saying. You can have people drive 45 foot into 53 foot, makes a big difference. Particularly when you're doing your turn radius or anything else, or.
Some guys make it look easy, some make it look. But, yeah. And then logging, he asked about, Tad asked about logging, so I put a narrative in there, I called my logger Jason, and we covered all that stuff, and everything was notified. I think it was Claude, the local forester, had been down at the site, seen it, was happy.
So we're going to hold out one couple until we get further information from you?
Well.
Can, can we?
We can deem it complete.
Can we deem it, yeah, can we deem some of these things met, so we know, we just narrow the, what we're dealing with?
I do believe if we dig right into this, you have, it is complete.
I, I think it's safe to, from having talked with Tad, to deem that the application is complete. That doesn't mean that, that doesn't necessarily mean that it would be approved.
Right.
You know, to Jamie's point, looking at the test pits, if, if you provide the data for the test pits and the test pits prove to not be worthwhile, it won't get approved.
Right, sure.
Or until you can't come up with.
Until you fix it.
Yeah.
Yes, but the test pits have been proven in the past.
Right, but he's just saying that has to be satisfied.
It's documented, it's already been.
I, I was just using that as an.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just trying to follow through on.
I would have printed a picture, but I was driving over it when Tad called her.
And ultimately, as you mentioned, I don't know if Tad touched on it in the lecture, so maybe you guys have worked it out. You mentioned stormwater.
Yeah.
Essentially, individual site plan, occasions will do their, their individual design?
Yeah, exactly, because we're not putting up any more buildings, and Paul felt, why do stormwater, if you guys wanted us to adjust anything, so he wanted his final grades to be done when he does stormwater for the final. But also, yeah, we were hoping that can mostly be covered at site plan as things come in. We've got that remaining.
He said that on the sidewalk.
Yeah, he, yeah, he said there was no major comments on the site, well, I'm sorry.
This is kind of vague.
No, it was pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
The three of us were there.
Okay, so I was wondering.
The reason.
And Paul.
There, there does appear to be a question on lots two, three, and four. The four, you're going to be removing some of the forest cover, but it doesn't show anywhere.
I, so, we don't have any plans to remove any forest cover, and that's what was another confusing thing. He did ask in these notes to show any forest or new landscaping coming in, as far as lawn, and, and right now, there is none, that extra 85 feet might take a few corners of trees, but it's pretty open right there already.
Hmm, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, so. So the answer is zero, essentially.
That would appear to be right.
Yeah, no, that's why it wasn't included, because we, zero.
Well, just keep saying, if the applicant is on record for holding that out, then those three points that Tad raised are met.
I think so. So the question now is to determine completeness and then move to a public hearing.
I'll move that we determine the application complete.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to determine the application complete, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. And now we move a public hearing on the 26th.
26th of this month?
Also move.
26th, 27th.
26th. Motion's been made. It's a whole public hearing on Thursday, March 26th.
I'll second it.
Motion's been seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate your time.
Ooh.
Yeah, you got it. Get it?
It, it hadn't been banged in a while, so it was just kind of freaking out.
Left right off.
In other words, it was lonely?
It was lonely. Next item. Yeah, this, this is Tad's stuff. Tariff and landscape. Plenary site plan application determination of completeness. A proposal to construct 40,280 square foot gravel parking lot for the storage of equipment, trucks, mulch, loam, and other earth materials associated with a landscape design and installation business located at 1544 Quatton Road, tax map 29, Lot 19, in the DB1 and DB2 districts. Of course, the holder is the owner, applicant.
Thank you, I'm Steve Dill from Sebago Technics, if you remember from last time we were here, Mike's also with me. So, if you remember the project, Mike moved into the front building of the garage. Now that he's in, he still has this facility in Kenny Bunkport that he'd like to move out of, move his equipment, you know, storage yard here, his, his mulch, lights and that. So we created out of the back, this is 240 by 160 gravel pad. We have identified two wetland areas, one that's here, that drains out through here. This one drains out this way, we're kind of building this on the high spot of the land. And we graded it so that it's, from this edge, this all flows this way and goes into a stormwater basin here. We have an outlet control structure and then an overflow there, so this whole site will drain in this direction. The way this is designed is that if you'll get look, truckloads of mulch in there. Or, you know, if you get stone loads or something like that. So this is designed that a tractor trailer can come in here, you can either pull forward and back in, or depending on how Mike lays out, tractor trailer can actually make a full turn in here and come back out. So that's kind of the design and why it's as wide as it is. Along this side, we've located the storage bins where he would store his mulch and just, you know, stones and products like that. Equipment, you know, the trucks are all, are still parked in the building, employees are parking in this location here, which is where they parked today. Essentially, that is it. I did go through Tad's comments. Clarify some of those, he talked about, excuse me, the parking, he asked that the spaces be striped. I believe they're already, most of them are already striped out there, parking spaces.
The front, the front is.
The front is parked.
Yes.
And then he talked about the wetlands, which I talked about those, he did make a note about his last sentence, these resources should be consulted, apparently concerned about maybe some offsite wetlands, whether they're shoreland zone. Anyway, there's no, there's no shoreland zone wetlands on this property. I know there's some, I think potentially right here, there's a little piece in the drainage channel that's shoreland zone, but there's nothing on this, this property that's sort of. We did submit a stormwater management plan that did, this project qualifies for ADP stormwater permit by rule. We have applied for that. Lighting, there is no lighting proposed. The buffering, Tad wanted to, he made some comments about the buffering. And he mentioned about mature hardwoods and that you see through a hardwood buffer. I purposely mounted this on an aerial, so you can see what the evergreen cover is out there. This whole area, this is the existing road.
Sand throat.
Yeah, and it's not centered on the right of way, so there's a fairly heavy evergreen buffer of mature trees in this area here. And actually throughout the site, but I think this is the area that if there's any buffering, that would be the area of concern. Also, there's no neighbors, there's some driveways, but the neighbors are located far away, there's, you know, significant buffer on their property, but I think the key is that this is a fairly heavily wooded evergreen buffer. Just like this one here is, if you remember the site walk, on how difficult that was to see through there. But anyway, if you, if you want to do a site walk, you know, we can quickly look at that better.
On your greens there. They're not necessarily all hardwoods, weren't there a lot of fir and balsam down through there? That stays naturally green.
Exactly.
So it's not visible through foliage.
Did hope some part I was trying to make, if there's not a lot of hardwoods, mostly evergreens in this area. Tad talked about noise. We are in the DB1 and DB2 districts. The way this facility operates is, there's activity in the morning, when the crews are loading up and leaving. During the day, there's really no activity at the site, other than a, you know, a truck may be coming in occasionally, but it's really in the morning, and then at the end of the day, if they're loading up to prepare for the next job, but really, there's not a lot of equipment operating here, all the equipment should be at a job site operating.
How many trucks will be going out in the morning?
I don't believe it.
We have 12 trucks.
Through the chair?
Yeah, Marty.
He may be having what kind of trucks he's talking about, because they're not necessarily heavy duty trucks, they may be smaller trucks. So that it may not be your noise element or anything else, okay? Along that, the thoughts of everything else along the way.
That, that becomes the question. We should probably get some kind of a DB study that will tell us what the noise level was. Because we've run into problems with contract yards before, where you may not have that issue, because you may not have these big dump trucks. But they generate well over the sound decibel that they're supposed to. So we just need to get a DB study that says, here, they're not, they're not doing that.
We don't have like triaxles and 10 wheelers or anything, they're all one ton, you know, pickup. They would use pickups.
That's, that's where I was going, yeah, there may be a one ton with a dump body on or anything else. And then also too, where your local neighbor is across the way at that particular driveway, what you're showing there, that, that one there. No, no, that first one. The first one right here, showing right there, is not actually a house, because that is a right of way going to another property lot. 250 feet back. So there is not actually any dwelling that is visibly effective by noise or anything else. The next one up farther, which would be sand leeches in itself. So, and, but he is another 150 feet up the road. Roughly, if I'm correcting on my measurements.
He's stepped back pretty far off the road too.
So, I mean, I, I know the lines in the property along the way, so, I mean, actually, for physical butters or anything else, you're not going to have your 70 or 200 foot radius of somebody being effective. Because at that particular location where you're speaking of right now, where that particular first driveway would be your 250 feet or better inland to the abutter. So it's just an entrance, it's, and what it is basically, it's only a right of way entrance.
I think what Rich is saying basically is to cover everybody, since there's been lots of discussion about noise. If you could just give us a, you know.
Yeah, just give this.
An assessment.
An assessment of what, what kind of trucks, what kind of noise gets generated. And at least we've covered ourselves and.
The neighbors in the front love trucks and noise, so that she knows. That's the question.
Especially if those trucks come from.
They love trucks.
Love the trucks.
Right.
Love GMCA.
It's on the bottom of the year.
Right across the street.
Right, that's what I'm saying. All they need to do is drive across the street and go right.
Yeah, but guess what, across the street, they don't have the big trucks right up front. Big trucks are always in the back. So you got your one tons and you got your happy.
But again, to maintain the same standard, we're out there for contract yard twos.
Yeah.
Give us something with the DB levels so that we can say, okay.
Yeah.
Because the, the levels are much.
Lower.
The levels are much less strict than they are in the other neighborhoods with DB2, so. If you, if you're bringing pickups, I don't think you're going to have a problem.
Yeah.
But we need something to hang our heavy.
Okay.
He told, I was just going to get a couple, two more comments. Fueling, spill protection, refuse?
Refuse.
Refuse.
Thank you. I guess I'll look to Mike, as far as fueling vehicles and waste, you know, dumpster.
We do have a 200 gallon diesel tank. It's on skids, and it's double walled, so in Ken Bunkport, I wasn't required to have any special.
Any additional?
Because it is double walled, it's considered.
Yeah.
We, we were more concerned from, if, if, when you're filling something, there's spillage, so then if it hits the ground.
We have, we have control.
Okay. Yeah, if you could provide us with that information, that's more than anything.
But. Yeah. Okay. And then the last one, any more questions on that? Okay, last one was fire protection. Fire ticket not received. Has that received? Has that responded to it?
The only thing you have to check to make sure you're at least 1,000 feet within a fire height.
700 feet to Bentley's.
Huh?
700 feet to Bentley's.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what I'm going at. I mean, but we have to have it documented to show it's there. I mean, uh, because Mr. Bentley did put the fire hydrant in along Route One right there.
I had that as a fill-in on the plan.
Right, yeah.
So just Mike, to go back on to the, the whole spill protection, where you will be having that. I think you'll be under the threshold of requiring a formal spill protection and prevention and control plan.
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
I mean, you may already do this is just to have some kind of.
C Y B.
Spill material or spill cleanup material around just until.
We have the, uh, big container that, uh, some speedy dry stuff, you know, so I can.
Yeah, just as long, you know, just, just reference that, you know.
Also too, for your information on your fire hydrant, there is another fire hydrant down across the street from, um, the storage unit right there. There is another fire hydrant there besides Bentley's being that way. There is another fire hydrant right across the street from where Charlie Horse is. And before, uh, the, uh, it's way before the daycare center. So there's double fire hydrants there. So, I mean, adequate connections if ever needed is there along the way. Because it's almost across the street to Buddy Me.
See, I didn't realize it was one down that side.
Yes, I'm just trying to, for point of information.
Is it on your side, Marty?
No, it's on.
It's on the other side?
Yeah, well, let's put it this way, that's where the water main is.
Uh, yeah, I guess it would have to be on the other side.
Yeah, the only other, the only other thing is along the way, if somebody had undercut it, like I had to, to bring water in. But the, the hydrant runs on the, the, uh, I'm going to call it for clarification, Bentley's, Weir's side of the road.
Okay.
So you, you have another note there for another fire hydrant location. It's to the south. It's after where he is, there is the house Buddy's being, and it's almost across the street.
Okay. Right, I think at this point you've got a bunch of information about what we're looking for. Tad has a note here saying he thinks that we should do a, have the stormwater plan peer reviewed?
Yeah, I think, I mean, for the nature of that, it's probably worthwhile.
Okay.
As long as your water is it, is it flowing to the abutter per se. But there is also where that water runs, there is a natural water drainage through the culbridge. Uh, through the gully of it, right through there.
But regardless of how it's working, what we're going to have to do.
But I'm just saying, it is, that is what has been there. Because the adjacent lot is still undeveloped. And as we had done our sidewalk, when we were first looking at it, we did look at the terrain and everything elsewhere was flowing. So, I mean, uh, which was not a problem at the time.
Which I think leads us to the next point, the new sidewalk.
Yeah. And we can do it during the week.
We can do it during the week.
Cause we have daylight savings time now.
So if we're in the sidewalks, if we stake out these corners.
Yes, we'll get to which one.
Yep.
Do you state them out, show us where you're going to put the bins?
Okay.
I don't know how much clearing it needs to be done to, for, anyway, it's still all natural vegetation.
It's pretty thick in there.
Yeah.
You can walk around.
Yeah, yeah, you know what I'm saying, I mean, uh.
Well, I think, you know.
Show and tell.
The exterior, you know, four corners.
If we, we put some stakes, you know.
Right, yeah.
Kind of the perimeter edge of it.
Yeah.
I think you'll be able to see that's.
And that way too, you can, we can also see. Also too, at the same time, you can see the natural vegetation covering this way.
These are pretty obvious.
So, so when would you like to do the sidewalk?
For the next meeting?
Before the next meeting? Six.
Oh, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that way it's daylight.
Twenty-six.
I'm sorry?
Um, which is your next meeting, correct?
Yes, it is.
Um, unless you want to do it and I'm not there, but, yeah, I can answer the question.
Everything, you know, it's down.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do the sidewalk then on the twenty-sixth and then we'll, we'll comment on during our meeting and then we can move forward from that, from that point on.
Yeah, I suggest that it's probably not going to take an hour to do this.
I, yeah, okay.
Yeah, let's, uh, so maybe six twenty or six thirty?
Six thirty?
Six thirty, yeah, six thirty.
Depending on the weather or the else, I say schedule it at six, thereabouts. Depends on how much romping we gotta do, which shouldn't be that much. But usually we play time before we get back here.
And we, we gotta get back here by seven o'clock.
That's why I, I say not to conundite.
Getting hung early.
Yeah, not to conundite, but I mean, uh.
Six thirty you need?
Six thirty, yeah.
Uh, six thirty's kind of rough, cause even, even the one that we had last Saturday over at B D F, we were there for what, twenty minutes?
So six fifteen.
Six fifteen might be a little easier, yeah.
Six.
Yeah, I would worry.
I would worry at six thirty just to get back in there and walk around.
Yeah, give us a, so say six fifteen on the twenty-sixth. Somebody make a motion, please?
Don't move.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Second.
For the, a sidewalk at six fifteen on the twenty-sixth.
Right.
Any, any other discussion?
I can get up, I bet.
Can you read none? All those in favor?
Yeah.
It is unanimous. We will see you on that date.
Thank you. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter Dibber.
Next item, a Rundle self-storage, smart transportation.
So I, I'm here as a proxy. Uh, my name is Kurt Clark, a commercial real estate broker. And I, I don't represent John Smart the buyer, but I'm colleagues with Craig Church, who does, you know, proxy for the two of them here. John has met with Tad, by understanding, proposed, um, some use of parking vehicles in the middle of a Rundle storage. And he's looking for permission to operate in that fashion. He's under contract to purchase, he's received bank approval. One of the contingencies is that he be able to operate in this fashion.
Yeah, Ted, Ted made the point that theoretically this would be a livery service, but we don't have that classification listed in our, in the land use ordinance. But according to the town planner, this livery service is technically a trucking or transport service and would qualify as a truck terminal, which does qualify.
Yes.
Yeah, and it, and it is a transport service where he's going to be transporting people instead of merchandise.
Two legged instead of boxes.
I don't have a problem from that aspect, okay.
No.
And, and it's, it's something that at some point the board's going to look at and that kind of say, we need a livery service.
Definition, sir.
How many?
Correct, if I'm wrong?
Add it in the definition.
Definition.
Well, add it in the definitions, but we'd also have to make it a, a condition we use in the B I.
Yeah, but what I'm just saying is without a definition.
Yeah, it doesn't matter what we call it.
Yeah, they, that, that.
You're right. And that's the, that's the problem which we have here.
Correct.
So I don't, I don't have a problem with that. We are being asked to waive a number of items. I'm honestly quite surprised, we're being asked to waive the property boundary survey? He's buying the property, is he not going to have it surveyed before he buys it?
Again, I, I have not been.
I know, you're in the unfortunate field.
Right. So.
There should be a, there should be a property survey prior of somebody else buying it and.
Yeah, if they approve site plan or anything after the self-storage.
Uh, let me come, let me step in.
Who actually has the details.
The present owner, John Hotty.
So I.
I think who it is. He, he bought it as a storage unit facility already. Because there had been prior owners to that. But what I'm just saying is there still should be as a, and I don't remember exactly when the storage unit went in. But I can say it has been a very long time.
Well, Susan, Susan raises an interesting point.
I think we should table this discussion until someone, one of the principals or someone who has working knowledge of all the details. Cause there's more to be discussed and without our town planner here and without your ability to provide certain information, I think we should table it until the next meeting.
Did Ted not make a recommendation on that the board approves? That was my understanding, is that John Smart had met with Tad and Tad had indicated that this was a pretty straightforward.
Well, his, his recommendation is that we do a sidewalk.
With just standard procedure.
Right.
So, I mean.
So we, we could set it up to do a sidewalk. I think it would be better to have all of the necessary information first before we go out there and wander around. So that we, we, we would have a set of plans that would show us where everything is going to be located. And we would have these other questions answered beforehand.
I'm at a deficit, um, right now.
Yeah.
Well, the short answer is no. He didn't leave that, he didn't leave that note in our notes. So we can't, we're not going to move forward without that and without him.
Understood.
Yeah.
Um, they will need an extension. They will need an extension.
Oh, they.
Good question.
Pardon me?
They'll need the extension on.
On the real estate contract.
Oh, on the real estate contract.
So, so the, uh, the, the plan is to make this twenty by forty office building that's on the, I guess it would be in the south corner of the lot. And, and, and the, is that correct? That's going to be the office for the livery service?
That's my understanding. Yeah, it, it's changed use a couple of times from what I understand. It was used as an office and then it was used as storage. And so it's, it's kind of gone back and forth in terms of how that's been used. I believe that his plan is to create his office.
In that particular building? Okay, so the, so the, uh, vehicles will be on that back large area that's been, that's proposed to be paved over. And the rest of the buildings are going to continue in their storage usage?
Yes.
Okay, so it'll be dual usage on an undifferentiated property?
Correct.
But he didn't leave that message. So let's, let's schedule a sidewalk. And hopefully Ted will be back and they finish their discussion. And he made his recommendations.
Yeah.
I hope that they discuss it.
I, I, I don't think that we could do the application completely at this point anyway. There's, there's too many unanswered variables that need to be.
Because if I also remember.
I mean, we, we could do the sidewalk, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, I think the sidewalk would be very.
All right. So I'm looking for whoever else can curtail that.
Okay. So, when do you want to do your sidewalk, gentlemen? We can't do it on the twenty-sixth?
Well, the only reason, that's why I was saying.
Cause we already have one.
Well, we could do a little, we could go at quarter to six.
We did one at six, they would, one at six thirty, they would have covered the time element.
We'd never make it back and forth in fifteen minutes, Marty.
So why don't we make it five forty-five? I mean.
They're pretty close together, right?
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, but Marty wants to give us fifteen minutes to go from one spot to the next and look at it and review it.
Yeah, it won't take you two minutes to go from one spot to the next.
But it'll take us more than fifteen minutes to, to do that entire trip and review the site.
It'll take, I mean, five forty-five.
Five forty-five, yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll do, we'll do five forty-five on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
So let me make a motion, please?
I move that we do a sidewalk on the smart property at five forty-five on March twenty-sixth.
Is it a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for a sidewalk at five forty-five on the twenty-sixth of March. Any discussion?
To the chair.
Yes, Marty.
Do we want to, and I hate to say it. Do we want to move it at five thirty? I hate to say it, you know how I am.
Yeah.
We only need forty-five minutes.
I agree.
Yep, the, the discussion at this end seems to be to think that we won't need the forty-five minutes.
Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to be.
Yeah, I think an hour and fifteen minutes.
Forty-five minutes for the second, yeah.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.
Only thing I ask, make sure it's posted so as a reminder.
Yep, have, have him post out where the building is going to be.
Yeah, and, and so that I can properly advise them on timing and next steps. They are going to need a, an extension on their agreement in order to stay within contract. What is, what is fair to.
Assuming, assuming that everything goes the way that it should, he's looking at four weeks. Because in, in two weeks, we'll do the review and we'll, then we would schedule a public hearing. Assuming that the review goes well and we have everything that we need, we can schedule a public hearing at the following meeting, which would be.
Two weeks.
September April, I think.
Much turns on how many of these waivers are, were in too. Cause there are.
Yeah.
Full lot of waivers have been requested, I don't know if you know that. That's like the most I've ever seen.
I, I did see a number of them.
I did see it.
I'm relying on John's comment to me, having met recently with Tad, uh, that even though there were plentiful number of waivers, that they, it made sense, they were logical. And would move that.
And then the, the first one that I saw, the very first one on the top of the, the list for a waiver on the boundary survey. To me, that made no sense at all. Some of the others.
But this plan right here has, has the full boundary.
Should not be on.
What folder is it in?
I mean, I'm sitting here looking at the smart transportation.
I did not get all of Ted's.
Ah, that's why I'm looking again.
Maybe I've got something that even.
No, I think you have the same thing that Ted's.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm sitting here looking at that, I mean, he's got meets and bounds, both properties. You know, it's at a decent scale, he's got setbacks unless something's changed on that. Existing proposed right of ways or easements, I'm not sure, you know, if there need to be any added there. Ultimately, it appears indirectly, if I'm wrong, that the improvements are all within the already developed portion of the project.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, the only thing that I'm, I'm looking at that I might question that is you've got that thirty by one hundred storage right up along Route One that may be immediately adjacent to some existing gravel surface or whatever is out there. You know, I don't know if a topographic survey is really necessary, given that it's already developed. If they're not doing anything, you know, beyond.
I, I wouldn't argue with that. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
You know, I think, I think a lot of these are, you know, predicated on a new project.
Well, you mind on the property, uh, the, the property boundary survey? This property is being sold. Hopefully, it's going to get surveyed. And if it's going to get surveyed, just give us a copy of the survey.
They don't always.
Yeah.
Have a survey.
Really generally don't.
Really?
Yeah, more often not than. Oh, look at me, I have the survey.
I wouldn't, I would never buy a piece of property without a survey.
You were building as well, so you need a boundary survey.
Pardon me?
Wouldn't they do at least a boundary survey? You would think. Um, the, if there's a lender involved, they'll, they'll do a very basic one.
I don't know where my property is.
But there's still so many other like variables that we, you know, we'll do the sidewalk.
Yeah, we'll.
Hopefully Ted will be back and we can get a lot of this resolved.
Uh, question to ask you, sir, if I may, at one time or another, is there still somebody staying there for security? is there still somebody staying there for security? At one time or another, I think there might have been one of the units was turned in for the security in case people coming in and out or whatever else on, is that, do you know if that is at present or not?
I have no, I have no knowledge.
Marty, we're gonna, we're gonna move this right along. We've got a sidewalk scheduled. It'll be on the agenda for, that day, for the, for the review of the agenda. Uh, and we can discuss the waivers on all of these applications and if we, if we can reach consensus on all of that, we can schedule a public hearing for, for the following meeting. So, but you're looking at April tenth at the earliest.
Okay, I, I don't wanna belabor this. Um, there was clearly a miscommunication along the way in terms of how quickly this might move through for an approval at, you know, at the planning board level. Um, I think the sense, the sense was that there could be a conditional approval granted tonight. No?
No, we don't, we don't grant conditional approvals. And, and because, this has to go to a, to a public hearing? That's a fourteen day period. I apologize if there was any confusion in terms of the time, the timeframe.
And it's, and again, I, I have not been, you know, directly involved with the communication, it's just been kind of handed to me, so.
Okay.
Appreciate it, just wanna be clear in terms of what I communicate at.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're again the ninth, right?
Is it the ninth?
Yes, the ninth is the Thursday.
Oh, that's right, there's thirty-one days in March.
Yes.
They should just simply-
You as an accountant should be grateful for that.
I'd be grateful for that extra day.
I am not grateful for that, that is an extra day of work I have to put up with. They gave me February twenty-nine this year. Lead frog here.
Thanks again.
Have a good day.
Yeah, you as well.
Next item up, Elizabeth's Way, a proposed amendment to the approved major subdivision, a request to amend, amend the location of the fifty-foot right-of-way from Elizabeth's Way in which a portion of the existing right-of-way will be conveyed to tax map twenty-eight Lot Six E in order to contain a fifty-foot building foot setback for an existing residence while a portion of the land will be conveyed to the right-of-way from tax map twenty-eight Lot Six D to maintain a fifty-foot width of Elizabeth's Way. Peter Lovejoy and Elizabeth Clark are the owners and Northeast Trading Corp is the applicant. Are you here?
Yes.
Which one are you?
I am Donna Hall.
You are Donna Hall, okay.
So we've been in contact with Tad and Paul is gonna be here tonight, but he is sick. That gag, he's wanted to do the whole job, he did that whole road. So he is ill tonight, so I'm here. And he pretty much talked with Tad yesterday on, Tad wanted them to add a drainage easement, a fifty-foot, and he did do that. And I think, believe he dropped you guys off, a new piece that shows that. And I think that was the only thing that Tad was looking for, and we, Paul fixed everything and we're going back and forth with Tad with emails, and I believe he did what Tad was looking for. Um, we did get the land, we have the agreements, the land agreements to exchange land with the neighbor, for the land we needed to keep the fifty-foot right-of-way. Um, that's all been done and signed. Uh, and also Peter and Elizabeth Lovejoy are actually, the road will now become Rulo and Northeast Trading will own that road. They're giving, in this, they are gonna give that over to the people who owns that, own that road. They now will own that road rather. You can see it's all in the, I think it's on page two about middle way. With him turning the road over to Northeast Trading and Rulo.
So that's right, does you and Lovejoy access from a different driveway? Oh, no, it's Clark and Lovejoy, sorry.
Yes, well, they have, they used to own the house, you know, another right-way over. Um, and that's how they accept, he doesn't own the house there anymore, he just owns the garage that's there.
Yes. But where that, that, their property, Lot Two, has frontage on the, the cul-de-sac right there.
Yep.
But they also have access from a different location, is that correct?
Yes, Lovejoy has that, will access down near the cul-de-sac.
And what about Lot One, Fish and Cooper? Do they come off of a different-
There's the people who live on the other road where Peter used to own that house with the garage. They're the ones who gave Northeast Trading, I think it was two hundred and something square feet of land in order to keep that fifty-foot right-of-way.
Okay.
We had Dan Rush, I think, is one-
In the proposed conveyance there?
Yep.
Okay.
Dan Rush is the one who blew up the agreements and killed, you do the deeds as soon as this is completed. I think what happened was the corner of the garage where, where the road has like a curvature in it, it just ended up being off two feet, and when they did a mortgage survey, that's when it was found.
Yep.
So we're just trying to fix it, so it works for us.
So I'm confused as to which of these, it was tough to find.
Elizabeth, there are two of these? So which is the newer of the two?
The original, and then he dropped off a new one today, which, uh, I would have that copy, but it was a very-
What copy do you have?
I have this.
So that's the older one?
Yeah.
This is the first one, and then he had- Is that this?
Oh, yeah. Okay. This is the current one.
Yeah.
This is new, with the drainage?
For one day then three?
Three eleven, yeah.
Three eleven.
We have another one, day one, three, what?
The two I have, both dated one twenty-four.
Three eleven. So this one's J J.
I'll give it, it's okay, thank you.
I have a question just along the way. Usually, will this make a difference, because usually there is a between the right-of-way and the edge of the road, minimum setback was fifty feet. And if this is conveying, it's moving over, will there have to be anything else not being a fifty-foot setback?
It is a fifty-foot setback, it's the, the, the neighbors gave land.
They're correcting-
To keep it a fifty-foot setback.
They're correcting that approach and, and now giving the land to provide a fifty-foot setback.
Okay, okay, I, I'm, maybe, maybe I was reading it the wrong way.
Yeah, they're, they're tweaking the approved right-of-way up there to move it away from that structure.
Okay, you, you, you see where I was?
Yep, yep.
Because we've run into this in the past about front porch setbacks, this, that, and everything else, a thirty-five feet, fifty feet, whatever else. I, so I'm not trying to, so that we don't have another glitch.
So once that two hundred square feet of land is given, then that corrects the two feet of overage that the garage has?
And we've got four feet to be, cover everything, not creation, so.
Okay, and then, so the fifty-foot setback then is maintained all along the road? So I think that's what you wanted to know, Marty.
Yeah, okay.
So.
That's where my question was, thank you, sir.
Yeah, what do you mean?
I'm confused, I have two different agreements to exchange land. One dated the twelfth of February and one dated the nineteenth of February.
Uh, one, all, they could sign individually or they could all sign on one, how Dan Rush, I guess, set this up in case you couldn't get everybody together on one, and so one person is signed on a different date.
Oh, okay. That's, that explains why the Coopers signed it on the twelfth. Okay.
So what are we approving here? The amendment to a subdivision plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Because without the, there, there's a whole issue with whoever was buying that house.
Right.
They'd never be able to get a, a certificate of occupancy.
Because of the setback approach.
Yeah.
So this seems to resolve the issue.
It does.
Yeah.
So.
I would love to approve.
Wait a minute. I have a question.
Yeah, Marty, but hang on, we've got a motion to, to approve that has been seconded. So, now we're open for discussion.
Okay. Prior press, before we make the approvals and anything else, boundary pins were set when and whatever else, which may have can shuffle this right-of-way after the property was sold or anything else?
It's all been-
No, it's, it's my understanding that-
No, no.
It's my understanding that the, the building, after the property was, was, was split up and developed into lots, there was a, a garage placed in a spot that made it two feet too close to the road because whoever the builder was did not take into consideration the curvature of the road, which is what caused it to be two feet too close. And that's, that's what led to this whole issue, because when they went to, to close on it, there was some kind of a survey done that said, this is too close. And the codes enforcement officer went down and said, I'm not giving you a certificate of occupancy, the, the building is too close.
One corner of the garage.
One corner of the garage, it's two feet too close to, to the, uh,
Property line?
Yep.
Okay, because the only reason I was asking is because if I remember correctly, if I'm correctly from wrong, we had asked when it got approval, pins weren't set until afterwards of deeds of, uh, recording.
Yep.
That's where I'm coming at along the way, is under my question.
You, you could be right. I don't, I don't remember. Just so far back in memory banks.
But is it material to what we're discussing right now?
Yeah.
Well, how is it material? They, by giving the two hundred square feet of land and the garage is two feet over, uh, close, too close to the property line or the setback, this should rectify that and if, what happened in the past shouldn't be material, given the changes they're making right now.
In other words, this is correct, in other words, this is correcting the situation.
It did, yes.
But this is correcting the situation, or that came about because the curvature of the road wasn't taken into consideration.
Whatever.
Right, the building was like, whoever built the building didn't take into account the curve.
The curve. The angle of the dangle.
The angle of the dangle, so this corrects that.
Okay, I'm, I stand corrected, thank you. Now, do we need, through discussion?
Is there any, is there any more discussion?
Do we need to, to make sure that everything is set for the code of enforcement?
If, if the building is-
We had peer review before.
If the building is fifty feet banned from the, the road or from the right-of-way, which is what it appears to be, there's no reason to have a discussion. I talked, I was talking to Jim today, and he's, it's two feet too close, it just needs to get fixed.
So is a fully amended plan been submitted? Okay.
That will-
Well, Paul was gonna be here tonight.
Yep.
But like I said, he said, so. Uh, he went out, he redid everything, um, you know, the pins, whatever's been moved, everything is good. The new agreements for the land that the neighbors gave is here. Um, there'll be new deeds done now, we'll get the new deeds all done, those we recorded, those, those lands that are changed a little bit. But two, two of the homes, that'll all be done.
All right, Cindy, according to the memo that we got from Tad, Paul added a fifteen-foot drainage easement, easement along the northern boundary that would cover the encroachment of the drainage ditch into Lot Six E. He erased the confusing drainage easements, the dotted lines delineated on the original plan and shown up as the boundaries of Lot One and Two. And provided that we're amenable to the modification of Elizabeth Way, uh, those changes will solve the issue. Basically, he's saying, if, if you think that, if, if you want to allow them to make the change, he's good with it, because the plans were changed to reflect that. He's also saying, you know, disrespect to the applicant, he's saying that we don't have to if we don't want to. And, and, but if we choose not to, somebody's gotta move that building. Which would be an ugly situation. The ordinance doesn't require us to say, yes, we will, we will do this, we could always just say no.
Oh, why would you?
Oh, I have no idea why we would do that, I'm simply, that's what, that's what Tad is saying. He says, if the planning board is amenable to the modification, we can go.
Well, as long as the change, which I assume Tad has, has reviewed, I mean, it looks like there's just the one change to the, that curve.
It does.
As long as that is still compliant with the road standards, then I don't see any reason for it.
And the drainage has been put in, so.
Right, and based on the memo that came out yesterday, it appears that it is.
Yeah. I, I, I would say we move the question.
Yeah.
Okay, the question, the question has been moved. Is there any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. That's it?
That's it.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
We'll, we'll let Tad know and, yeah, I don't, I don't know if there's anything-
We'll need to get Paul to sign and all that good stuff.
Awesome, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Next up, Weers.
Next victim.
No.
No victims tonight.
And Paul couldn't be here tonight because Paul is sick.
Does he represent everybody that comes and went?
He had a bad cigar. You can't have a bad cigar.
Okay, uh, proposal to construct a twenty-five hundred eighty-one square foot expansion on the north side of the existing showroom, amend the current parking layout, relocate this, the sight lighting for an existing vehicle sales and service facility located at fifteen thirteen Fulton Road, tax map thirty-three Lot Two, in the DB one and DB two districts, Weers Motors Sales Incorporated, see owner and the applicant. I didn't know you owned them.
Are you doing it?
Worst, worst kept secret in town.
Oh, I was like, what?
It's, it's the best kept non-secret in town.
I'm not even in town and I know this one.
Yeah, the, the big one is back there, the historical meeting.
Yes. So that's the yellow section on here that you're, you're gonna be expanding on?
Yeah, actually, can I come up?
Very, very well.
Um, so there's a couple of things that, well, one thing that, what the actual plan?
I'll share, yeah, I'll share, we just do.
You didn't give one of these?
No. No.
You didn't give one either?
No.
I sent.
All the required-
I missed that Tad told me to get-
This, this one I have.
Yes, that's the one.
Okay, I saw some, I thought you had someone else over there.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Yep, we're good, I'm, I'm, I've got it.
Okay, so, but you didn't, you didn't have the actual drawing, though?
The other drawing that was floated around, I didn't have.
I might do that. So-
The yellow spot.
The yellow spot, it's a very, very little, little yellow spot. But, so basically, this is the drawing, and base, back in, what was it, two thousand and twelve, when GM came in and did the whole renovation, they required us to put in this service write-up and service advisor section, taking basically this much out of our service department. They required us to put in this service write-up and service advisor section, taking basically this much out of our service department. And ever since then, it's really affected our business greatly because it just shorted us, so much was space in there. So, um, in, since that time, we've attempted to put mechanics in our, our other two buildings. In the body shop, in the recon center, doesn't work. It's just, it is, it is just.
The drive-through doesn't help for the service. The drive-through doesn't help to, to, for the, the service center.
Right, the drive-through is there for a good reason. And, and it would work, but if we didn't have to use it as a bag.
Correct.
Right now, we're like, you know, we park cars in it and we work on them because there's just no room, everything is kinda cramped. Since, there is gonna be a change to that little yellow section though. Um, that I, they have to talk to Tad about. It was discovered that the 32 feet, when there's a snowplow on a truck, does not work. So, um, this is 32 feet here and these guys, I'm thinking are working just fine, so if you can just do 32 feet here. They're like, no, it's not just fine, because basically if they pull a truck in that it's got a plow, they're working outside. Um, it just doesn't fit in there. So we wanna change this to 36 feet, which will put us to a 2,900 addition instead of 2,600. So, we will be looking for another 320 square feet, which isn't, you know. Paul and Day said it's, it's mine, it's not really.
Sounds like a so what to me.
Exactly. So, yeah.
It's not gonna change, it's not gonna change your yellow blob on this map.
Well, it's just gonna be a little bit.
You couldn't see it on that map, and I figured it out here and it actually.
It's gonna be four feet wider.
Four feet wider, that's it. It's just gonna be four feet wider than the, um, than the plan that's there.
Yes, but when do you, are you including the sander and also the trailer hitch that's on that too? Because that adds another.
I'm not gonna go any further because I would wanna be able to drive around the back. Which is why we're going that direction instead of, you know, putting it in the back of the building.
You understand what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying, the sander over that lights the truck is another three feet.
Yes.
I mean.
Yeah, so your standard, when people are thinking about like the space, the architect, and, and, and again, the gentleman that GM sent down. The architect that we had to pay for, that they sent down, they weren't thinking that we're a vicious snowplow distributor and.
No, they, they only, and they only, they're only looking at the regular truck. They aren't looking at the truck with the step and everything else there.
Yeah, so.
Four bays?
Okay.
Uh, five.
Five bays?
Five bays. Five bays, uh, we're not, uh, I mean, uh. Hey, Graham's working on the structural as we speak, we're not actually tearing down that full wall. We're just gonna be cutting out, uh, basically holes.
You still think you're, on the other side, the far back side, is the regular entrance?
What do you mean?
I'm back here, back here. This is the regular.
So, yeah, see, with those parking spots that were right there, we're gonna have to take those out so we can still drive through.
This is the service area that comes up.
Yeah, well, what do you mean? This is the regular entrance this way.
Service. So that they can have the full.
This is where Noah's and Stan's bays are right here.
Yeah. But so, so basically, so basically, this is Noah's ways.
I believe that's what it says.
Right here.
Yeah.
So, that, that door's still gonna be there, but then we're gonna have five more bays right here.
Okay, see, I didn't get that picture, I didn't get that picture.
Okay.
That's why, that's why I'm looking at this without this.
No, okay, great.
You see, and you know what I'm talking about when I say Noah and.
So.
They're necessary, we don't have to do them when they're not necessary, that's a bad precedent to set.
What? What is a bad, that's an exception.
No, it's, that it's such a small change.
It is.
Diminimus.
I thought I was actually, we were kinda like, thought we were gonna like.
It is, I said the best one. Diminimus is the right word.
Right.
So, really, I've really viewed, yes.
If we.
Yeah.
That unless there's something hidden under that 36 feet by 80 feet, it seems pretty straightforward.
Is that, is that existing pavement?
Yes, it's, it's on existing pavement. Um, and, uh, Paul wanted me to, he's submitting the, uh, DEP minor revision application to the stormwater runoff. So that's, is getting done, because he figured that would be something that was gonna be required. So other than that, I mean, I, I, and I.
Our lighting.
Okay, so that's another thing I wanted to bring up, but Tad put that in there. We're not changing the outdoor lighting, the lighting.
You're moving the building out, but.
Correct, but he may, I thought.
I wanna say to him, the existing is present.
He, he's talking about parking lot lights.
I'm not touching those.
No.
We're not touching those, so.
Well, he's, he seems to think that there are parking lot lights that need to be relocated.
They're not. So basically, on the side of the building that's existing right now, there's three outdoor lights on the walls.
Yeah.
I'm going to take those same lights and put them on the new.
On the new wall.
Shuffle.
So, I, I know that sounded like, like.
Yeah, pole lights.
Yeah, but no.
It sounds like pole lights.
No, no.
Because I, to me, there's a difference between building lights and parking lot lights.
Yeah, and that sounded.
One's in there or one's kinda playing touchy-feely on the building.
No. I mean, this is gonna be such a minor.
Touchy-feely on the building. The same light rooms, everything else that's, you know, where, where we went to, the whole light room.
We've already been through that, we're not, we're not touching it.
That's what I'm saying, so you're taking, you're taking the existing.
She's moving the building out, she's putting the existing lights on the face of the new structure. I mean, you know, we can ask Tad just to make sure that that's what he understood. But you're looking for, uh.
Yeah, there's, I'm just, I, if.
Completeness, correct?
If you're looking.
No, this, this application is anything but complete. And Tad makes that really clear.
Okay.
He says that the applicant is aware that the pre-app materials submitted are insufficient for a formal site plan application. But requested a site walk to determine what additional information would be required before formalizing the plan of the site plan.
Isn't exactly the wording that gives you.
Me, but.
Says here.
Why don't, why doesn't Paul talk to Tad?
Yeah.
Well, or you talk to Tad? When Tad's there.
So, Paul and I have gone through that. Tad told me the only thing I needed was a site plan. It's basically, with the DEP amendment in the site plan, obviously, what else you could possibly need.
I don't know what Paul, I don't know what Tad is talking about needing. He's saying that, that this is an incomplete application as is other stuff needed.
So. Well, he, he didn't say what it was, because that's what the whole idea of a pre-application meeting would be, is to find out what we needed.
No, because he thought. He, he thought that we would be going out to do a site walk.
Tad loves it when we do sidewalks.
Okay, when you go to do the other ones, you could just drive by. Um, he says, there's not a heck of a lot to see there, why you.
That's why we don't have the information, because he thought we would, we would be doing the sidewalk.
You know what? It's true, it's across the street. How long would that take?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Five minutes to come and look.
Five minutes.
So why don't we do it on the 26th?
We'll do it on the.
Now, 5:40.
That's perfect.
Well, I was gonna say.
When I do it at 5:40, we're gonna do it at 6:45.
At 6:45.
6:45.
Because it's gonna be right across the street.
That's right, at 6:45 and then we'll just walk across the street and take a look at it and then.
Instead of going on.
What time we got, what time do you have the, around the storage?
5:45.
5:45.
6:15.
Then 6:15.
6:45.
So either that, either that.
For 5 minutes.
No, either that or you turn around and spend 15 minutes across the street and then go to.
I was just gonna say you can't.
Uh, go to, uh.
5:45.
5:45.
So, so.
I saw the.
What happened you guys want?
6:30 I thought is 4:40.
6, 6, excuse me, 6:45, you're right Jamie.
6:40.
6:45, right, 6:45.
I mean, I think we all just saw sidewalk at 6:45.
So, okay, I'm a bit, I'm a bit caved in to you though, can we go back? So Tad's notes stated that we need a sidewalk to come, to, to determine what else we could need?
Request a sidewalk to determine what additional information will be required before formalizing the plan of recycling application. He's, he's thinking that we may look and we may see something that we wanna have addressed.
Yeah.
That's why I think you guys should communicate with Tad and find out exactly what he had in mind.
Right.
Because we have no idea.
We don't know.
Yeah. Because ultimately, I'm, I think I'm with you again, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty.
I mean, and then I did, I, I did go to Tad and specifically ask him those questions.
Right.
What else am I going to need, so that I can have it available.
And he didn't give us any indication, so we don't know.
He, he had, he had a lot, uh, on his plate this, last week's lot. Sounds like he was under the weather too.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, so, um.
So we're trying to move right along.
Yeah, uh, so.
Yeah. And ultimately, that will be the mechanism where we can, we can have a more, a meaningful conversation at the next meeting, assuming you're on that agenda.
If we're doing the sidewalk.
By going through and just make sure, we go and, and look and say, all right, we don't see anything.
So I will be on the agenda for, yeah, by 26th.
I don't know that, I don't know that.
We need to take a vote on whether or not we're doing the sidewalk.
Okay, I move that we make a sidewalk at 6:45 at Weers Motors. And then put them on the agenda for the meeting.
No, you can't, you can't move to put them on the agenda.
Okay, I move that we have a sidewalk at 6:45.
Okay, so why do I need to do?
A motion has been made and seconded for 6:45.
To be put on the agen- I can't be put on the agenda.
Let us, let us finish, let's do this motion.
Hold on, hold on.
A mo- a motion has been made and seconded for 6:45 for the sidewalk on March 26th, the law was in favor.
That's it.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.
But I can't be on the 26th, need.
We will discuss the sidewalk with you and if there is other stuff that we see, uh, we will tell you at that point. But you won't be on the agenda for approval.
Doesn't, because doesn't that, Tad scheduled that, doesn't he, doesn't he, doesn't he give that to you?
Because he started, do we.
No.
All right, do we need a public hearing?
So, no, today was, would have been the cutoff to get put on the agenda.
For approval.
For that, for, and, uh, yeah.
With that, we can.
This is chair.
I know, uh, yeah.
Hang on for a second.
Will we need a public hearing for this, that's my question.
Probably.
Okay, so that's why I'm asking you, sidewalk, everything's happy at the meeting, public hearing. That's why I've been trying to ask along the way.
Okay, so I have another question. So if Linda slash Paul talk to Tad and figure out what Tad thought he wanted us to see in a sidewalk and they get it resolved and determine that basically Paul in his, you know.
Drawing.
You know, drawing has satisfied what Tad was thinking, then we don't need the sidewalk, then we could put her on the agenda.
We can't call a public hearing, we don't know, uh.
We still have to do the sidewalk for a public hearing.
What the, what the result is going to be.
Okay.
We can't, we can't have the public hearing until we know what it was that Tad was looking at. So make sure that we have all of the information.
So, so does this require?
Which, which, wait a minute, which, which, it doesn't kind of make sense, so even it like, so I'll have to wait till next Thursday? Because I would have to, in order to be on the following week's agenda, I would have to submit the, our application, our, our natural application.
If next.
Thursday.
If next, at the next meeting on the 26th, if we did, if we review everything and we deem that the application is complete and all of the information is there, we can schedule the public hearing, which would be on April 9th.
Okay. So when do I?
We cannot schedule the public hearing on the same day that we determine it's complete. Requires a 14-day notice in the papers.
Have you said it severely?
How did you do that last time then?
How did, have you suspended the application?
You don't wanna know.
Oh, with the easement, me and the, for lady slipper?
So what? Correct, we did it last time with lady slipper.
We're, we're on the camera, I can't tell you.
I'm quite certain it was all legit.
Quite certain it wasn't. So why would this, why would this require a public hearing if it's solely a site plan approved? It was no public hearing.
Course it was.
I think there was.
There was a public hearing.
Yeah, we did have a public hearing.
There was a public hearing.
I wasn't, I wasn't.
No, I was the chair for that one.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a public hearing, we did everything.
Because we don't, we don't necessarily do a public hearing for a site plan, do we?
All of them. All of them. I thought it was just conditional uses.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, right, it is conditional uses that we do the site.
Right.
This is a permitted use.
Permitted. This is a permitted use.
Right.
I, I keep thinking that everything is conditional and this.
No, not anymore.
So, wait, so let's review the bidding.
It is, it is possible that if everything is ready at the next hearing after the sidewalk, it is possible that you would get your approval. But we.
It's confusing.
Everything has to be done and it, and it has to be complete. And according to the memo that we have right now, it is not.
And that's what you need to clarify.
But he said it's not complete, but gave you no indication about what's not complete.
He thought he was gonna be here, so he would be able to tell us.
So clarify that with him, Linda.
Linda, the other, Linda, one other thing to make it.
Thank you, I keep, I keep.
Physically visible.
Sidewalks.
Okay.
I do know, yeah, no, we did it right last time.
Have it marked out on the asphalt where the building is coming, you know.
It wasn't.
Instead of trying to put pins.
You want me to spray paint it up for you?
We did have a public hearing.
Absolutely.
I mean, that way is.
That's a piece of cake.
That way it's, it's physically show and tell.
He was here.
I mean, uh.
That's fine.
You know, instead of saying, well, it's gonna come, and put a stake in and they run over the stake and it's gone.
You should tell me. Because I turned to him at every tournament and said, this is what we do, I mean, you know.
Do your draw, do your drawings on it.
Yeah, no, that's not a problem.
Well, moving right along, it's done.
And it's moving right along, we will see you in two weeks.
All right.
At five, at 6:45.
But we all have a lot of time, so we gotta be able to bank it up.
Very much to see.
Okay.
I'll have my chalk, I'll have my, uh, spray painter, my chalk.
Yeah. To the chair.
They know?
Yeah, Marty.
You can go there, okay?
I like to ask the applicant a question, not relating to this subject.
Okay.
Okay.
Help put their coffee tomorrow.
No. Have you heard, because we have not heard anything from you in the townhouse corner[1559.94] about proposed changes of.
We can't discuss that, it's not on the agenda, it is something we're working on.
I've asked it her.
We can't, you can't discuss it, Marty.
That's why I asked the question to you.
All I could say is if it was something that was extremely important to me, I would have been at the meeting, although I did have another event going on, but.
I'm sorry then, to the chair.
Leave it at that.
So, leave it at that, thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm sorry, to the chair.
Thank you for the support of the other event.
I had to go to the other event, so.
Okay, next item, land use ordinances, amendments to the land use ordinance section nine two nine, review the proposed amendments proposed by the town attorney to nuisances in the conditional use permit review criteria, and that was the letter that we got from Leah.
Is she still with Bergen and Parkinson?
She is not with Bergen, she's with Woodsum.
Is that our new?
Our new attorney, Drummond and Woodsum, yes, they're our new attorneys and she is with them now.
But no, I mean, we were never told we've changed, I saw the headlines, but we never were told that we have changed.
Well, supportive selectmen aren't gonna tell us these things.
Okay, thank you.
But, but we have a conduit.
That's right.
Through the town hall, that.
That's right.
These kind of things would be nice to, to be kept up to speed on.
It would be. It would be.
Well, I was very confused, cause it was like Leah's gone and then all of a sudden there were memos from Leah.
Right.
No, she's not.
That's why I was asking.
No, that's what I, I had heard outside of here that she had moved from Bergen Parkinson and just assumed that, okay, well, she won't be handling any rental business.
Well, she, she wouldn't, but, uh, Bergen Parkinson didn't wanna keep us as, as clients, they don't wanna, they don't wanna be in the land use business. They wanna move into, into some other aspect of law, so Leah ended up with Drummond Woodsum and they're using her because she's got a lot of the towns in the area, so she's gonna expand up their practice a little bit.
I, I, I didn't care, but I'm just saying, we were never, they were talking about changing possibly account, uh, firms.
Yeah.
But we never knew, it was in a talk stage, but we never knew if they did or didn't.
Yeah, we were never officially notified as to who our attorney would be. We still haven't been officially notified, although we do have correspondence from her.
Uh, may I ask to the chair that we would be notified properly?
I'll tell, I'll tell the town manager whether it happens or not.
Well.
Well, he'll, he'll, he'll review the tape, so he'll.
I mean, so we can at least publicly know, so the public can know also? So.
Okay, so at any rate, the land use ordinance, the proposed, uh, criteria. For those of you that don't know, the town prevailed in the Billy Stilfen case, we won. But according to Leah and according to the letter that she wrote us, the court stated the potential problem with the ordinance's language is it does not appear to provide any sort of threshold for noise that must be reached for to adversely affect neighboring properties, which is particularly troubling, giving that, given that a contract, an operating contract to yard under CY two permit will invariably generate some amount of noise, so we have to come up with a threshold, a standard. And I thought, I thought we had a threshold, it had, it was fifty five at, at the property line.
There was lots of discussion about.
But what I'm reading this is that, yeah, I think, I think the, the concept of adversely affecting neighborhood property, that's, that would be the standard.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought, but, uh.
But somebody thinks it's vague and I would tend to agree.
Yep.
Did she give the threshold?
Yeah, the judge thought it was, no, she has not given us anything, she has said that,
Nothing clear.
if you are amenable to making some changes and if so, where are you on the timeline, run up to town meeting? Given that this would be an amendment to a zoning ordinance, the planning board would need to have a hearing in addition to any hearing the selectmen conduct. I'm wondering about your thoughts on trying to get this on the June town meeting warrant. Well, I think if we're going to do that, she needs to come down here and she needs to say to us, what's wrong with having a fifty five dB standard at the, at the property line?
Well, and so what the judge said is that he found it troubling because invariably machines generate some amount of noise and the implication in that is, is that, you know, that it, what we deemed unacceptable was very low and that it put undue on, I mean, they found in our favor, but it was almost as if we, our requirements were so stringent that, you know, almost no machine would pass muster, isn't that a big?
No, well, I, I, when I read.
Well, what I, I actually, what I think in looking at this item five right in the middle of the page, is that we have two standards that, that pertain to noise, one is these, the actual noise standard, I believe it's in the site plan ordinance that lists out the different decibel levels that, that can be emitted from a site.
Yep.
And then we have this item five in the conditional use standards that likely is more vague in that it only, it only, it refers to adversely affect neighboring properties.
Right.
So that there's no definitively, definitive standard of what is adversely affecting.
Okay.
To the chair.
And, and it's, that's possible, it, it could very well, because they make the point, uh, or she makes the point that the court didn't need to decide, uh, that particular issue on the basis of the vagueness of the claim because they found something else.
Well, only, only one of the standards needed to, to fail for the application to fail.
That's right, and the other standard. The nuisance standard upheld.
Right, and that's the one that was, that failed and pretty much caused the, you know, domino effect for the rest of it, right?
Right.
Memory serves.
Yes.
No, there's a different standard, there's a different conditional use standard that pertains to nuisances.
I think it was number three that pertained to.
Yeah.
Well, she was, she was yeah, because she discussed the definition of nuisance, cause she said that there's a legal definition for the term nuisance, is that correct, Jens? Is that true?
If I, if I understand, go ahead.
Uh, well, uh, you're talking about statute or?
Yeah, does nuisance have a legal definition?
There are, there are specific statutes that define certain nuisances, among them fences and, and I think, I think that there are others. But, uh, I don't think the state statutes, which I'd be more familiar, are being addressed here.
Okay, but there's no generic, generic term that.
This is what a nuisance is.
Right.
Not, no.
Well, I, I think from, when I look at this, I, I think essentially we need to have our, the town attorney tell us at what level does noise become, does it adversely affect the neighbors?
Yeah.
Because we don't have that. Marty?
Three things, one, there was different standards for different times, for one, along this particular case. Second of all, it was one vehicle, also distance from the property. The other second was other vehicles not from the property, which gave a different reading. And thirdly, under nuisance or anything else, we have to consider this, that even under the motorcycle law, your DB, your, your sound level, okay, besides being for truck or anything else, it cannot be, for legally purposes, it says whatever your catalytic converter is saying for your noise level is the maximum. And if these are still below your maximum, then where do you come under your nuisance for fifty five, sixty five? When your catalytic converter for exhaust or anything else is no more than a hundred. I'm just throwing this out as my side of the, of the category. We knew we went through this by many different episodes, but we also turned out, had different attorneys along the way giving us different analogies of where noise readings work.
We need to have some, something that we can hang our hat on, because it.
It's too vague.
That's, that's what the judge said, it's too vague, so we need to define it, but I think we need to have the town attorney come in here and say to us.
Give us guidelines.
So I would, I would suggest a, a different tack.
Okay.
In that her last sentence is, let me know what your pleasure is, we can take a stab at some amendments if you would like. That infers to me that both for the, the course of expediting this, that as long as it's within the budget and approved by town hall, is that she would be willing, or, or people that work with her, to make some, some, uh, proposed changes to us that we could look at, discuss, and, you know, I think at that point, whether we had, if, if we got to a sticking point, we would have her in or work through some, some thoughts through Tad in order to get this done.
I think really what the problem in here is that there isn't any kind of modifier or qualifier associated with the phrase adverse effect.
Right.
That's all it needs, to bring some, uh, objective basis to the measurement of the effect.
Right.
Because right now, all it would take is some, uh, whiny guy, uh, and that seems to me would satisfy his language.
So we could say quiet enjoyment of your property or?
It affects my property and it can be, you know, vociferous at a planning board meeting where this is being heard and, you know, that's, that's all it needs. Okay, I think we, if, just keeping things as, as they are and, uh, giving it some, some, uh, contour or some, some, some color, so that we can identify, you know, objectivity.
So what, what kinds of, so without being, you know, saying that this is what we're gonna use, what kinds of def, you know, additions would you make to that term to give it the contour you think the, the court would be satisfied with?
I don't think any one of these words by itself, or even in combination, would necessarily do it, but, uh, words that, uh, that qualify or augment or color things like materially or meaningfully or reason, you know, unreasonably, adversely affect, things like that. We gotta think about how to introduce language like that, that should be objective, but it's not just subjective, but objective. So, you know, a, a reasonable person from the community would, would find the, the, the effect to be adverse to their property. And not just somebody who has a vague, thin scan and can't live within any distance of, for example, uh, the Amtrak and hear their whistle without having a problem.
Or the lighthouses or whatever.
Lighthouses, Marty, or whatever it might be, that's all we gotta do, is introduce a little bit of language like that.
And, and my suggestion is to allow Leah and her staff to propose some of those additions that we've got, that we've got, you know, we're at, at.
We're not creating.
We're not creating it from the very beginning, and let her, whether it's based on other ordinances or what they know is, is acceptable, so to speak, by the courts, you know, get, get us started with those kind of, of proposals and instead of us trying to do it from, from scratch.
Yeah.
This is, this, this kind of thing for, for communities that have done, uh,
Roll.
that are, that are developed and have been through this, that, you know, have dealt with it before, just like taking a look at their standards and it doesn't necessarily think it has to be main, this is a, this is a fairly, uh, narrow thing that we're dealing with here. So I think a look at some, uh, of the zoning provisions dealing with that from maybe some of the mature Massachusetts communities where people have been living tightly packed together for a while, or Pennsylvania, or wherever, something like that.
The other thing is, the other thing is, when we were talking about possible and might be a little helpful, when they were proposing to put up an eight foot fence instead of a, a ten foot fence or anything else for buffering or for noise, this may be a guideline to help for your decimals.
But, but I, I, to Jamie's point.
Yes.
I, I, I don't.
It's not up to us, we need the guidelines.
No, no, no. I, I don't care if she comes down here and presents something to us, or if she goes and does some research and gives us something. I think it has to come from the town attorney.
Yes.
I'm sorry, guys, I'm not smart enough to, to be able to.
Yeah, but we're not picking this up.
Regardless if I know what the minimus means.
Hey, we're not picking this up.
And I think, I think if we, if we have any hope of getting it done before June, we need to get, we need to start from second base.
Right.
Yeah, we, we.
Not first.
Well, it's like what we did with home occupations, we looked around to see what other people, you, you know, how they defined whatever.
Right.
I have another request, if this is a, um, a suitable place to insert some language that has to deal with whoever is there first, so, you know, and we're talking about, you know, Stilfen Lane right now, but there are other instances where there are residences and a contractor two yard has a permit, but the residences precede the, the contractor two yard, does that make sense? And so it's, it's the residents, the, the quiet enjoyment of the residences that drive what happens in the contractor two yard, whereas if you buy a piece of property and it's next door to the dump or, you know, some other property that generates noise, you know, odor and whatever, you know, you go into that purchase with the understanding that this already exists there and you don't get to drive the changes to suit you just because you built a house there. So the, if the houses come first, it's sort of like chicken and the egg, then they, it becomes, you know, treated as a residence, residential area more than a contractor yard area and vice versa. So if Stilfen had been there first and it expanded his yard and done all of this and none of that had been built and none of that property had been sold, then it might be a different story, depending upon how we write about it.
At, at the same time, I think we have to look at it, and, and here's where, uh, cause I agree with you.
Because towns, a lot of towns have ordinances like that.
If you were there first, then the neighbors should not be complaining. However, if, if you go and you put in that you wanna have a, a yard two and I'll, I'll use my house, it's, it's at the farm next to my house and you're gonna have a yard two in there and I don't show up with all of the neighbors complaining about it, I should never be allowed to complain about it in the future. You had the opportunity when it was first, first went in, don't come back to me and complain three years later, oh, it's too much, it's too much, I can't. You should have been there at the meeting to start with, you should have shown up on day one to voice your objection. And then I would listen and say, yes, you have a good point, so maybe we shouldn't be putting it in there. But once we put it in there, we can't be telling the applicant, no, you can't have it anymore.
Well, but we can say.
We gave them permission to do it.
But we can prevent them from expanding beyond the limitations of their permit.
Oh, absolutely, we can.
And so that's what was happening, uh, on the chip, between the chip and Kay.
Well, he, he was going for a different level of permit.
Right, so all I'm saying is those houses were there first before he got there.
No.
No.
No, they weren't.
They weren't.
Not all of them.
Oh, really, Chip, when I asked Chip, Chip about it.
They make the deal, don't they?
No.
He was there first.
He was there first.
Billy was first, Billy was there first.
Well, I think something should be, I, you know, Tad seemed to indicate that there are other towns that have some language that, that deals with that.
And do you have the issue of coming to the nuisance?
Does that come into nuisance?
It's the issue of coming to the nuisance.
Coming to the nuisance.
Residents coming to the nuisance.
Yeah, so we, we could, we could see about getting some languages in there.
So, so what I was, the one thing I would caution with that is if we have a, similar to say, I would, I would say our DB two area where we are looking to, uh, encourage a different type of use than a lot of, you know, perhaps a lot of residential right up in that area, that a, a provision like that could be used against a, um, an applicant that essentially the town's new zoning is trying to attract.
Hmm, yeah. Fair point.
Yeah.
But that's a sort of, you're right, it, it, I think it, it's part and parcel of the same thing, but slightly different.
Oh, it's very, it's, it's a, it's a different example, but it's the type of thing if we had that as a blanket criteria
So you would have to have.
that somebody could argue that point.
I agree, and so it has to be more defined, yeah.
Right, we need to be very, I'm just trying to say we need to be very mindful of how we approach that topic.
Because residential development is going to encroach on a lot of, you know, we see all the develop, all the developers that are coming in here to build houses, high end, middle, middle of the road, low end, whatever you say, and, you know, some of these contractor two yards are, you know, sort of working against the direction that a lot of these developers wanna take the area and where perhaps we wanna take it, I don't, I don't know the, the final answer to that. So we have to find some way to protect both, and, you know, maybe we do it, you know, so that it defines what you just said
Yeah, I don't know.
takes care of houses that get encroached upon by contractor units.
The other, the other part of that is we need to, I would say, be mindful of, if an area has historically been used for outdoor recreation and somebody comes in that wants to say do a subdivision, that we don't have a provision in the ordinance that sort of overrules their property rights. Or somebody could argue would overrule their property rights because, you know, this has always been used by, you know, everybody over on this side of town for hunting or snowmobiling or, or whatever, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take Tad's position on this, that's what planning is all about.
You just, yeah. I, I agree.
We need to do the plan.
Yeah, right.
Oh, there's no question.
And, and, and that's the hard part of the job.
Right.
It's like, when do we have time?
Yeah, that's the thing.
Okay, I will, I will tell Tad on this to, to talk to Leah. Update on medical matter, wanna caregiver revisions, I don't have any, I don't know what.
Yeah, yeah, I, I was thinking way fast that one. Right?
I'm sorry.
We don't have that, do we?
No.
It's appropriate to pass that one, isn't it?
Yep.
I would think.
Except, well, I don't, I don't know what we have, uh, in terms of that amendment or, or that land use ordinance.
I expected, I expected Tad is gonna have something for us tonight.
Yeah, he should, I, I thought he would.